Well, welcome to the regularly scheduled school board meeting. We're in the right room, right place, right time, Carson City School Board. We'll start with the first order of business, which is the flag salute with Mr. Cassioppo.
(inaudible) Item number two, adoption of the agenda is submitted. This is for possible action.
Motion by trustee Walker and second by Mr. Swerzick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, you didn't call for public comment.
Do we have any public comment on the adoption of the agenda? Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Item number three, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Green, members of the board. Pleasure to be with you this evening. A few things for you. This week has been a busy one for the school district. As many of you know, this has been the time when our new teachers have reported to their assignments. And we have had a number of meetings with our new staff, and will continue to have those meetings throughout the week as they prepare for their assignments this year. I'd like to make particular note of an event that's happening on the evening of August the 15th at 6:30. You are quarterly invited to attend a pre-K open house at the Boys and Girls Club. And if you need more information about that, please give me a call. As you know, that will be a new partnership for us, and we're excited to see how that goes. And then our first day for returning teachers and really all staff is August the 16th. And right next door here in the community center theater, beginning at 8:00 a.m., we'll have a nationally recognized presenter by the name of Myron Dewick, and he'll be speaking to our certified staff. And we look forward to hearing him. And I'd just like to mention too, for any of the folks that might be watching tonight, if you have any questions about attendance zones, or vaccinations, or any of those typical startup activities, please feel free to give our offices a call, and that number is 283-2100. And our webpage at www.carsoncityschools.com is full of information as well. And, Mr. Green, that will end my report.
Mr. President.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Swerzick.
One other question.
Just, Mr. Stokes, are we invited to the 16th, 8 o'clock deal with the speaker?
Yes, please. In fact, that's why I made mention of that. I should've said specifically, "Please come." You would be most welcome, and I think you'll find it in line with much of our thinking and planning as it relates to the learner-centered model.
Do we have any other questions? All right, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Item number four, board reports, member reports. We'll start with trustee Cassioppo.
I just wanted to make mention that the Jump Start program started this week, so the high school kids are involved in the Jump Start program. Started school Monday, they finished their second day of class, and so far, so good. But it's a, for those that don't know, many of the kids, you have the option to take your fifth class as an accelerated condensed class just before the semester starts. So it's a three-week course, about two and a half hours a day, and they get three of their credits taken care of before the semester starts. So some of the kids participated in that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Carini. Trustee Walker?
So, yesterday, I was among, in good company with trustees Wilkie and Swerzick in going to the new hire breakfast at the Governor's Mansion, and I think that it was a great event. So, good energy, I think a real nice way to start the careers of our new educators. And so I walked away pretty impressed. So, nice job, Mr. Stokes and your staff. Few announcements from Boarderwick Bray and Fremont. Boarderwick Bray had some summer family events, so like they had a picnic at Mills Park, and they had some good turnout for those events. And they are looking forward to having additional family events throughout the school year and encouraging families to attend. They're looking at events such as trips to local museums or different types of family gatherings. They're going to have a parent meet and greet, which is scheduled for Friday, August 18th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And this will be a great opportunity for parents and students to come and meet their teacher, check out the classroom, and see where the students will be sitting on the first day. They will also have a back-to-school night that is scheduled for Thursday, August 31st. It'll begin at 5:30 p.m. for grades K through 2, and 6:15 for grades 3 through 5. So all parents will report to the multipurpose room for staff introductions and announcements before going to individual classrooms. And they are looking forward to seeing all of the parents in attendance. From Fremont Elementary School, they will have office support with extended hours tomorrow and next Wednesday, August 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Kindergarten and first grade will meet, will have a meet and greet on August 18th at, from noon to 1:00 p.m. And then parents, principal, and pastries will be hosted at 8:25 on the first day of school for kindergarten parents. The following Wednesday, August 30th, they will have one of those same events for the rest of Fremont families. The PTA will have a welcome night on August 24th at 5:30, and they have a back-to-school night scheduled for parents on August 29th at 5:30. And that concludes my report.
Great. Trustees Swerzick?
I just want to, an additional comment on yesterday with the new hires. It was pretty exciting, a lot of energy in the room, but I think a special recognition should go to Carrie Pryor. She was unbelievable, how she put, just her presentation got people kind of excited. And I know everybody, there's a lot of people involved in putting this on, but I just wanted to acknowledge her role in this.
And trustee Wilkie?
She was so dynamic, I was ready to go see if I could get a teaching career.
(inaudible).
My international marketing, and I can change out your toilet, I'm all set.
We can work on that.
Let me tell ya. Anyway, we had NASB this weekend, a lot of good information. Those of you that weren't there, gave you your, we have this yellow one, it's Cliff Notes of legislation that went on, and then if you want to get into the weeds, it's all in the white part. A lot of good discussion. We're gonna have some really good conversations later to make sure that we're doing some of the stuff that the legislature passed. The fingerprinting thing was a big discussion, and especially for volunteers, we're pretty overwhelmed by that as a group. So, looking forward to getting with, we're looking forward to getting with staff and figuring out how we're all gonna get that done. It was probably the biggest issue. And then we got our speakers all lined up for our November conference. Probably the biggest one is the Ed Massey. He is an ex-school board, or ex-national school board president, great speaker, if you've ever been to any of the national ones, he's a great speaker. And he's gonna talk about why NASCAR and school boards have in common. I always like when you have a sports name, makes me perk up. But we're gonna have Recent Trends in Nevada Law and Implications for School Boards by Sylvia Laslow. If you don't know who she is, she was very involved in the court case with the school vouchers. And then our two keynote speakers is William Parrott, he's speaking twice, and about what school boards can do to turn high-poverty schools into high-performing schools. And talking about school board and superintendent relationships. And then also an update on the Teachers Leaders Council. And to help us satisfy one of our six hours of training that we now have to have because of the legislature, they've put in a section about public records and school board responsibilities. So, if you're a school board member, if you attend this, you'll have five out of six of your hours for this year, if you're one or three, and I think we're all either one and three. So just to let you know, and that's my report.
Thank you. Is that gonna include your NASB report also in stuff, or is it?
Yeah, I think the NASB part is about the nominations for our awards that are at that banquet.
All right, and thank you for your report. I don't have anything extra to report. Do we have any association reports? Oh, I skipped an item, I'm sorry. Or any other announcements? All right. Number four, or number five, association reports? Okay, none there. We'll move on to number six, which is public comment. I don't have any sheets in front of me, but we'll do, we'll go through it in case somebody feels like coming up. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked "for possible action" before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to come to the podium, sign in, speak into the microphone, and identify themselves for the record. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and to not simply repeat comments made by others. So with that, do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none there. We'll move on to item number seven. This is presentation by representatives from the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association, and an overview of the Nevada Leadership Program at the University Center for Economic Development at the University of Nevada Reno, including information designed to aid in the administration of government, including public schools in the state of Nevada through economic development and other items. This is for discussion only.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Thank you for having us and putting us on the agenda. I see we have 14 minutes, but it will be short and sweet to just to keep your time. So, I am actually the senior air quality planner for the Washington County Hope District in Washington County, but I'm also the newly-elected Planning Official Development Officer for the Nevada American Planning Association, which is a mouthful. Newly-elected, it's really nice to see public health and planning get together because there is a lot emerging of public health, so it's really been exciting to be on the seat as the, as an executive committee member. So, on behalf of the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association and the University of Nevada Center of Economic Development, it is our pleasure to present you all today with a copy of the Nevada Planning Guide, just recently published in 2017 in February, which I don't have a copy to show you, but you should all have one on your desk there. The Planning Guide was developed over the course of about two years, took about eight volunteers involved in the development of the Planning Guide. I had the pleasure of leading the project and the team who developed the guide, and learned greatly myself about all of the wide range of planning topics. And the mission of the American Planning Association is to provide elected and appointed officials, government representatives, staffs, members of the public, and the private sector with professional development and educational opportunities as it pertains to the wider world of planning. So as the PODO, or the Planning Official Development Officer, I think it's funner to say PODO, I serve as a reference person to elected and appointed officials and planning officials to coordinate this exchange of ideas and information, and to provide training materials such as the Planning Guide, and provide training opportunities. So this includes reaching out to electeds, providing training materials, providing training opportunities, like hosting workshops and social events, special tracks at conferences, and partnering with programs developed with universities such as the Economic Development Center and the Nevada Leadership Program. So the Economic Development Center, which is Fred Steiman's program, he runs that, he couldn't make it tonight. So just a quick overview, I'll go into that a little bit later, but the Nevada chapter and the economic development has formed a partnership over the years to help provide these professional development opportunities and information, including this guide, to those interested in learning more about planning in Nevada. So the Nevada Leadership Program, Fred Steiman's program, under the Center for Economic Development, has a very similar mission to the Nevada American Planning Association in regards to providing planning opportunities to those who are interested in learning about planning in Nevada. So if you're interested in learning about a specific topic, or hearing from a subject matter expert, or we even have an upcoming conference, we could develop tracks like that and have sessions. If you feel free, you could talk at one of those, we could even get you lined up to do that. But again, on behalf of the Nevada chapter of the American Planning Association and the Economic Development Center, we are presenting you with your very own copy of the Planning Guide. And inside the guide, you'll also find some additional information, including development opportunities coming up, such as the conference I just mentioned, which will be held October 1st through the 4th, right here in Carson City, which is pretty exciting. And then an upcoming global climate change summit that the Nevada Leadership Program is hosting, and that is on September 23rd, as well as background information on the Center of Economic Development, which Fred Steiman's card is in there. If you have questions on that, on that center, please feel free to contact him. If you, if you're interested in any subject matter expert sessions, topics, please contact me, my business card is in there as well. And if you have any questions, I will, I will take them now. Otherwise, that, that is our presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Green. Not really a question, but just an acknowledgement that Candace Stoll is a former appointed member of this board, and so it's nice to see her name on your document.
Yes, thank you. She was, she helped me get it going. She was, she was definitely a master player in that, so thank you. I will let her know. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to us and to our attention.
There's copies online, you can download a PDF, just download any of the information there. Everything else is online as well, so feel free to copy it and share it. I give her an A, copies do stuff. Thank you for your help, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight. Discussion and Possible Action on the Nevada Association of School Boards. NASB is the acronym. Nominations to be Considered for Recognition During the 2017 Annual Conference. And this is for possible action, and Mrs. Wilkie will do this portion.
So, this is an ongoing movement until August 15th, nothing is final. So, when Mr. Stokes called me for a list of names, these were the ones I was kind of working on, so I had forgotten a couple of them. So I'm gonna have Mike tell you who we're nominating in the categories that he was in charge of, and I'm gonna have Ryan tell you who he's doing, and then I'll go over the whole list. So we'll start with Mike.
So, I'm nominating, or we are nominating Mrs. Laura Valley for NASB Innovative Teacher of the Year, and Rosanna Robinson for School District Employee Making a Difference Award.
And for the, I guess it was journalists, local journalists, we're gonna do Taylor Peddaway from Nevada Appeal.
And we've been lucky enough to win that award when Terry Vance was writing too, so we're pretty excited about that one. And then the ones I've been working on are School Administrators of the Year, and some of these you can put two people in, so that's why you'll hear some duplication. We have Mr. Gina, Mr. Zona from Pioneer High, and Mrs. Karen Sims from Boarderwick. And I did check with Joe, and he said that she was a principal during the cycle, so even though she retired, we can still have her. And then a School District Employees Making a Difference, the same two people, because it has to be administrators at site buildings. And then District Level Administrator Impacting Student Achievement is Dr. Ricky Medina. Board Secretary Extravaginaire is Mrs. Cortez. And then we're nominating ourselves for School Board of the Year, because we're so awesome. In case you didn't know, we thought we'd tell ya. Superintendent of the Year, we have Mr. Stokes, individual friend of K-12 Public Education. We have the library, because we couldn't do it without them. And then we've added another Innovative Educator of the Year with Mr. Bland at Pioneer High. So, we've done, last year, we won for Dr. Perdare, I think was the only one. And the year before, we had Ron Swerzick. And we did win School Board of the Year. A little by. Oh yeah, Lee Conley, you won too. Yeah. So we've had some luck. So we're looking to sweep this year, though we're on top of it this year.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Wilkie?
I'd just like to make a comment, you know, about the Carson City Library. This is a super partner. And over the years, and I just want to make just some comments while we're here, and I see Cena is here in the, in the audience, that it's not just a library, it's an innovative learning center that, through the Board of Library Trustees and the, and the staff, they turned it around to, to actually partner and give our, not only our students, but our students and their families something way beyond. And I think, just simply put, they've combined academic achievement with the power of imagination using technology. And our kids, and families, and teachers have all taken advantage of this. And it's, I, whatever happens, I just want to, just get that on the record, as a, just a super partner.
Thank you, Mr. Swerzick. Do we have any other board member comments or questions? Okay, this is an action item, so I'll take a, accept a motion if anybody'd like to make one.
Just a point of clarification before we do. If we add somebody because we find, we have time and we add somebody else, is that gonna be affected by this motion, or just because it's just the nominations?
I think if you as individual board members have additional nominations, you'd like to make your, free to do that.
Okay, Mr. President, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the Nevada Association of School Boards nominations to be considered for the 2017 Annual Conference.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by trustee Swerzick, second by trustee Wilkie. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? How about public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll take a vote. What's your vote?
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody voted yes. With that, it passes, and we'll move on. Item number nine. Informational update on the Read by Grade Three program in the Carson City School District for the 2016-2017 school year. This item is for discussion only, and we'll have Mrs. Kima, Ms. Riquetta, and Mr. Brigham.
Susan Kima for the record. On July 1, 2015, the Nevada State Legislature enacted Senate Bill 391. The primary state statute is to, the primary purpose of the state statute is to promote effective literacy in grades 3 through 12 across all public and charter schools. That act is called the Nevada Read by Three Act. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce to you this evening's presenters, Mrs. Cheryl Riquetta, who was the Lead Learning Strategist for the District's Read by Three Initiative this past year. Mrs. Riquetta was also, she had a dual role. She was also Mark Twain's ELA Implementation Specialist. So we did not fill that position last year, so she played two roles. In addition, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Nate Brigham, who will be the Lead Learning Strategist for the 2017-18 school year. Mr. Brigham has taught elementary school for many years and was the English Language Arts Learning Implementation Specialist for Empire. We'd like to wish Cheryl luck before we start the presentation, because she is now going to be spending her time with Mrs. Ward as an Assistant Principal at Fremont Elementary School. So I feel like tonight's a little bit of the handing off of the baton, making that transition. So without further ado, I'm gonna let you listen and interact with both of these professionals as they take you through Nevada, Nevada's Read by Three Act 2016-17 in review.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Cheryl Riquetta, and tonight, my goal is, with our time that we're spending together, is to highlight the accomplishments that we had last year, being the first year that we rolled out Read by Three. It was a very busy year, but we got a lot accomplished, and as you'll later see with our results and our data, we had some great outcomes. And then we're also gonna be talking about our upcoming work, because last year was the first year we rolled it out, but there's still a lot of work to do, and Nate will be talking to you about that. So at the beginning of the school year last year, during the 2016-2017 school year, we developed an if-then document that was used to take the law and make it in simple terms for our teachers, and for our parents, and anybody else that was working, so that they would have an understanding of what was involved in the law, what the law required, and what teacher expectations would be. In addition to that, we spent a great deal of time training all of the teachers, making sure that they understood what, what it entailed and what their expectations would be. And in addition to that, we also went out to each of the sites and had meetings with each of our parents, because we had, with our kindergarten parents, last year's kindergarten students, this year's first grade, were the first group of students that were going to be, that we're gonna be looking at when it comes to that retention piece. So it was really important that they understood what the whole process was. After that, we began assessing our students within the first 30 days of school. We assessed all of them using the NWA map, and to determine who our students were that we're gonna need extra resources and help. From there, once we had that determined, we sent letters home to those parents, or we actually gave them to them during the conferences in October. We also worked with our teachers on how do you write those intervention plans so that they'd be successful in order to help our students be proficient readers. From that point on, the teachers brought those parents back in, and we had conferences with all of them. And they worked together as a team to really develop those individual plans. So it wasn't just about the teacher saying, "This is what you're gonna do." It was about, you know, "This is what we're gonna do in class, this is what we're gonna have your students be doing, this is what we're gonna have, we'd like you to be a partner in working with them at home." So some of those interventions could've been classroom interventions, one-on-one, it might've been pull-out with interventionists, because that was something we were able to offer at each of the sites. It might've been before-after-school programming. And then, of course, we also had the summer school program. From there, teachers carried out their plans, progress monitoring weekly, so that those students didn't fall through the cracks, and if something wasn't working, then we could change it. And also contacting and talking to parents regularly to let them know, you know, how their students are doing. We also had professional development that was offered as part of this. So one part was we brought in all the leadership teams from each of the sites and did some training on the NWA map, because it had been a while since we'd had that, and a lot of things had changed. We'd had different reports, different ways of looking at the data, so we wanted to make sure that we were really using the resources that were available to us. In April, during our Professional Development Day, we also trained all of our kindergarten teachers, kindergarten parapros, reading tutors, ELA Implementation Specialists, and interventionists on the brigands, because this coming school year, that's what's gonna be, we knew that was gonna be a requirement, and we wanted to get a jump start, which we're ahead of the game. The state's coming out just now asking, you know, districts saying we're providing training, and we're able to say, "We've already done it, we've already got it covered," which is, is nice. So, the brigands will be given this year to our kindergarten students. We also gave training to our intervention teams at each site on the KTEA 3. This is a really important resource that we have, where we can test students that aren't showing the growth that we want them to be showing, to see if there's other issues. And it, not only does it give us information about where their weaknesses are and their strengths, but it also tells us some interventions that we can put into place, which is just invaluable. And then once we trained the intervention teams on giving the KTEA 3, we also began administering it, and then putting those interventions into place and changing them so that those students could be more successful. And finally, we created a portfolio this year highlighting, there was a focus student from each student, from each school. And with that portfolio, we, we were able to interview teachers, parents, the student, implementation specialists, so then that went back to the state to give our feedback on the program. So, with all that work that we did, we had some, we had some end-of-the-year data that we submitted. And if you take a look at it up there, I'm going to start over with third grade. And seeing as you can see in third grade, we had, at the beginning of the year, after we gave our fall map testing, 31% of those third graders were below grade level in reading. And so, we set a goal, and our goal was that we wanted by the end of the year to have only 22%. And as you can see, our end-of-the-year, actually during the spring map, turned out to be 21%. So, we met our goal. We actually exceeded it, and we showed 10.1% in growth. So, we were very pleased by that. Second grade, we had 37%. Our goal was 31% by the end, and we were at 26. So, again, we had a reduction of about 5%, I'm sorry, about 10%. And then, which exceeded our goal by five. First grade, we were at 37%. By the end of the year, we were at 23, and our goal was 28. So, again, we had a reduction of 13%, which exceeded our goal. So, we were very, very pleased by that. When you look at kindergarten, kindergarten, we had the highest percentage of students that were deemed below grade level in reading, and we had at 43.8%. By the end of the year, we had, we reduced that to 27.6. Now, it didn't meet our goal. Our goal by the end of the year was 25, but we did reduce it by 16%, which is actually higher than any other grade level. So, even though we were off by our goal that we set, we were very pleased by the results that we had. And then, this following data, which is in your packet, just breaks it down by our sub-populations, our ELL students. Again, you can see that our reductions range anywhere from 23% in kindergarten and second to 34% up in first grade. So, we had great growth with our ELL students, English Language Learners. And then, again, also with our IEP, not as much growth as we would hope, but all the same, we did show growth in every single grade level. And then, also with our Free and Reduced Lunch students, we showed from, anywhere from 6% up to 16, again, with kindergarten being the highest.
On the first table you showed, sorry, one, I was, yeah, there we.
This one here?
Yeah, that one, sorry. I was just curious, and I'm just asking, second grade, we had a goal, you know, that was a little higher than the others. I'm just curious why the deficiency percentage in second grade, you think, kind of tracks higher than kindergarten and first?
Basically, what we did is we looked at our data, and we know a lot of times when you, when you're looking at data and you have, say, students that are at the first or second percentile that are very low, they may not, by the end of the year, by the end of just one year, especially when you're looking at, say, kindergarteners, that we know, that's why the program is, that's why it's Read by Three, because we want, we know that it takes time sometimes to bring those kids up. So, over the course of years, some of our lower students may not reach that goal by the end. But our goal is, well, hopefully, they'll get 10% this year and 10% the next year and then 10% so that they eventually are on grade level. So, when we set our goals, what we did was we looked at all those students that were anywhere from like the 29th percentile up until the 39th percentile. And we said, "That group of kids, if we counted them and we felt confident that we could move those kids up," that's how we set it. So, we said, "Okay, if we take that group of kids, however many it was, and we move them up, what would our percentage be at the end of the year?" And that's how we came up with our goals. So, that's why it varied from grade level to grade level. So, one of the interventions that we were able to offer, all of our students that were, they had the intervention plans, was summer school. And we offered it to every student from kindergarten through fifth grade at every site that was on an intervention plan. And even some, some teachers came up and they said, "Well, you know, they weren't at an intervention plan, but they seemed to be struggling as the year went on." So, we offered it to them as well. And in those students that were, they say, maybe they weren't on an intervention plan, but by the end of the year and their map scores had gone up, and we were excited, we still had them, offered it to them also, because we didn't want, with summertime, for them to lose their momentum that they had gained. So, we had summer school from June 12 through the 30th. It was three weeks long, from 8:15 until, about four hours every morning until about noon. And we offered it, we had 734 students that were enrolled. We had 52 teachers, and we had 11 peer professionals, 16 cafeteria workers, and some bus drivers. So, it really, we were able to provide free transportation. We were able to provide breakfast and snacks to those students. We had, last year, when we did summer school, we had one peer professional with the funding and the money that we had. We were able to add on another one so that we got more support in the classrooms, more support into the teachers, to make that ratio even smaller and to help the students out. And then, just as we did last year, we utilized the REACH curriculum through National Geographic. It's a great program for reading, writing, and grammar, and also has a technology piece as a part of it. So, overall, very successful summer school. This is the data we gave up. They did one unit in the REACH program, Unit 6, and they were tested, did a pre-test the first week and a post-test the third week, which isn't a whole lot of time. But you can see our percentages as far as, we did have quite a bit of growth with those students. However, really, what we're really going to be looking at is when they take those fall map scores. Our goal is that those, whatever they were at in the spring, that they're at that or better in the fall, because summer school's all about not losing that summer, you know, what they've earned, gained all year long. All right. So, because of all of our hard work and the exciting things that we had going on, we were actually recognized nationally. So, back in about April, we got a phone call from the State Department saying that they were going to be doing, that Nevada was going to participate in a national reading study that was conducted by the RMC Research Corporation. And there were several states participating, I think Ohio and Colorado, and I forget all the rest. But Nevada was selected because they wanted to get some input on a state that was just beginning the whole process. And out of that, they chose four districts based on their upper performances in the state, and Carson City was chosen as one of them. So, in order to participate in this research study, Mrs. Kima and myself did about an hour-and-a-half-long phone interview with the research company. And then, they also surveyed all of our kindergarten through third-grade teachers. So, that was very exciting. We're excited to see that come out and see, you know, what they have to say about Nevada. In addition to that, then, back in June, we got a phone call from the state again saying the research company was now going to be putting together a video for Nevada highlighting Read by Three, and they wanted Carson City to be the ones to participate in that. So, the only problem we had was that they wanted to film it in July, when summer school was over and all the kids were at home. And so, we, Mrs. Maderos from Boarderwick graciously offered to come back, and we gathered up some students, and we were able to make that happen. And so, we're very excited about that. We had some parents come in that were interviewed. They interviewed some teachers. And so, we're excited to see that when it comes out as well. All right, and I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Nate.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I look forward to being here often. Now that I've officially taken over Cheryl Riquetta's job, I know a lot of it will be reporting on progress to you guys. As you can see, we, in the first year of implementing this, we had a lot of success. But no matter how much success you have, there's always things you can do better. So, our goals for this year, if you looked at last year, on average, we were, our goal was a 10% reduction. When you looked at kinder through third, it was, to average, a 10% reduction, and we were at a 12.5%. So, we exceeded what our goal was. For this year, our goal is going to be a 20% reduction. We don't know that exact number yet because, as Cheryl said, until the students actually take the map test in the fall, we don't know the exact number of deficient students. Once we have that, we'll follow the same process. We'll look at those kids from the 29th to the 39th, get that number, and we're going to try and set it as close to 20% as we can. Last year, the kinder students, they took the NWE map test in the fall, like everybody else did, and that was used to determine deficiency. This year, they're going to use brigands. The kinder students won't take map until winter. That'll give those students a little more time to get accustomed to school. If they hadn't done pre-K, it's going to be their first experience in school and coming in in that second or third week and taking that map assessment can be tough for kinder students. The brigands is a lot more friendly to new students coming in. This year, the NWEA for kinder through third will be paid for by the state because NWEA map is now the mandated tool to determine deficiency, and so they will pay for that portion of it. The district will still pay for fourth and fifth for reading, and then we'll pay for all of math. So, it's nice to see that legislation was put into place with actual funding to support the mandate that was in it. This year was our first year with ILPs. Those are the Individual Literacy Plans. So, every student that was deficient had an Individual Literacy Plan. And with our first year of it, there was a lot of muddling through it, figuring out the best format to use, how it was going to work, where we were going to fit it into the schedule. And so, one of the big goals this year is, especially for me, is working with all of the different sites to understand how they implemented it, to then take that information and take it to all the schools so that if one school found something that worked for them, and this school was struggling with it, we can kind of share those ideas. We have very good educators. We have very good administrators in this district, and we need to make sure that we're sharing what's happening at each of the individual sites. This year, the ELA ISs are going to be working on creating the measurable units of instruction, just like was done for math and science last year. The reason it wasn't done last year and rolled out this school year is they're rolling out math and science this year, and to try and roll out new pacing guides in math, science, and ELA would be overwhelming. So, we decided to hold off on that. They're going to get developed this year, following the same process that math and science did. They'll be piloted, and then they'll be rolled out next year. We're also going to work really hard to continue the refinements that we've done with SFA. In the last two years, the district and the school sites have worked really closely with the SFA consultants to make sure that we are fitting the needs of our teachers, our students, and our districts with SFA. So, the standards come first, our students come first, then we're going to use parts of the program to make sure that those standards are taught to our students instead of starting with SFA and then figuring out how to fit our students' standards into that. And then, over the summer, a group of us went to the Washoe Parent and Family Coordinator to look at some of the things that they're doing for their family-school partnerships because that is part of Read by Three. It's part of the strategic plan. It's something that we're working on. And so, we were able to come away with a couple ideas of what Washoe is doing that we can try and implement in Carson to increase our family and school partnerships. Are there any questions on that?
Do we have any questions?
Nate, let's go back and just step back for a minute now. We're into this for a year. We have map testing in the fall. What is the ongoing intervention support for these kids? What, how does this practically work during the day? Or at the end of a week, we find out that, you know, a student may not be progressing? What's the immediate support for that student?
So, if a student's deemed deficient, we put them on the ILP. Using the map data, we're able to look at exactly what the student was struggling with. There's a vocabulary fluency, phonemic awareness. We're able to really pinpoint what it is. The teacher, as Cheryl had said, the teacher works with the parent to set up a plan. This is where your student is. This is what they're struggling on. This is what we're going to do to try and get them on grade level. Each student has their own folder, and on a daily basis, the teacher is working to put in place interventions for that student. And then, as Cheryl stated, on a weekly basis, some type of informal assessment is given that tracks the progress of that student, and then that information is relayed to the parents as far as what the progress is. The school sites this year had interventionists that helped support that. The tutoring program through SFA helps support it. And then, this year, we'd like to try and pull in the after-school program, working to support what's happening with that also.
I just want to add to that also. One of the really nice things is that these folders are going to be, we've collected them at the end of the year from their teachers, and they're going up, back up to those teachers and their new teachers that they're going to have. So, starting August 21st, those teachers are going to have those folders. So, they're going to know, even though they don't have the new data yet in the fall, they know where they are at, where they ended up at the end of the school year, so those new teachers can pick right up where they left off. And so, we can keep, continue to give support to those students.
You know, in bringing the families in, I mean, this is all, you know, but, you know, some of the students may not have that family support. What do you, what do we do then to help that student?
So, interventions. Whatever the intervention is, say it's initial sounds. The teacher in the classroom is putting those interventions in place. We do send ideas home to the parents as far as, "Hey, this is what you could do at home to help with this." But everything that's in that folder, it's being done by the classroom teacher at school.
And so, you mentioned we're going to start having after-school programs, but we haven't had that. Would we then have an ongoing after-school program for these students?
We've had some after-school programs with the 21st Century Grant over at Empire and Boarderwick and Mark Twain. It was just Fremont and Sealyger. We, when we applied for the grant, we put funding in for after-school programming so we can shore up the other schools and provide that same opportunity to our students. Summer school is also considered an intervention. Also, when we have students that don't have that strong family support, now that we have our Safe School Professionals, Peggy Sweetland from McKinney-Vento for some of those students, our ESL Department, our Special Needs Department, they're all part of this process, and they provide interventions as well wherever we, whatever needs, need to be met for the child. I think our district is in really good shape with being able to close some of these gaps.
Well, just one other question. Okay, the decision was made that ELA wouldn't be, come along with the science and math. But if a student can't read, they're not going to be doing science and math very well.
We already have a pacing guide in place. It's not as specific as the MIUs are. It's more, in this quarter, here's a list of standards, not necessarily the order. They don't have the learner targets like the MIUs do. So, there is already a pacing guide, and because we already have some guidance with the SFA program as far as orders to teach skills, it was more important to get the math and the science done, especially the math, because we hadn't had that curriculum before. So, it's, it's not like they have nothing and we haven't given them something. There was already something there. We just haven't given them that next step yet.
Just one last question. So, how often would you suggest reporting to the Board on this progress? This is, and I think our, you know, President right now has a real interest in this. I think we all do. Reading, kind of like is a key going forward. So, what would you suggest? And in your report, what would you report as far as overall student progress and where we are?
So, definitely three times a year, we can give you hard data that, when they take the fall, the winter, and the spring map, that'll be that real hard, concrete data. In between, I would say monthly. We can give updates on, you know, we're talking about ILP refinements, the development of the MIUs, and continued SFA refinements. Updates can be given on the progress of that, what information's been shared on ILPs, what changes have been made, how are we coming along with the MIU development. But as far as number of deficient or not-deficient students, really, that's going to be the fall, the winter, and the spring map assessments.
But don't you have some, not necessarily the map testing, but don't you have some intermediate testing guides that would let us know or what students and where they are?
Every student will have a different goal they're working on, and the teacher does weekly track that data. But to get that data from every student that's working on a completely different goal, we could give progress on how many goals the student has mastered, but it gets difficult. We had 600 and some deficient students that could conceivably all be working on something completely different. It would be very difficult to give hard data on that. We could definitely give updates on what they're doing and the process of it. Without the MIUs, we don't. When the MIUs are developed, there will be end-of-MIU assessments that we can give that data on.
I think, I mean, one of the things that I'm curious about, and I think that maybe what Ron is getting at, is like, I'm curious, how many students are potentially going to be held back at the end of the year because they aren't at grade level? And then, as you're tracking, what we're interested in is how many of those kids are moving out of that category? So, I don't think any of us are wanting to micromanage. So I don't think any of us are wanting to micromanage the ILP management process, but what we want to know is how many students are going to be retained? How many students have been removed from that? That's the type of data we want, I would say.
And that would come from the fall, the winter, and the spring map data. Because a kid could be doing amazingly well on the ILP interventions we're putting in place, but when they take that map, if they're below the 39th percentile, they're deficient. It doesn't matter what they've done on their folders. So if you want to know that anticipated number, it has to come from that map data.
So do we have that information at this point? So, I mean, as we're starting the school year, I mean, we have this data, but, so you're saying 600 students potentially could be retained at the end of the school year?
So last year, that's what our number was. We reduced that by 13 some percent overall.
Right.
But technically, none of those kids are off the deficiency list until the fall map assessment. So even though on the spring they were above, and we're saying, hey, they're probably not going to be, it's always that fall map assessment that really is deficient or not.
And I think that's the data we want when we get that test. And just, in a real cut and dry, this is what it is.
And within the first 30 days of school, that will be administered, the data will be together, and you will have it.
So if it was implemented right now, how many third graders would we have had with the last testing that would not be going to 4th grade?
One thing to consider, if we look right now, if I go back, we look at 3rd grade, if this 3rd grade class potentially was part of it, because remember, it doesn't start till our kindergarten group, then it would have been 25%. However, the really important thing to remember is that this just got started. And that's why we're starting with kindergarten, not with our 3rd graders and 2nd graders, because, you know, we know that it's not something that can happen in a year. It's over time. So really, the group of students that we want to be watching is that kindergarten group, which are now our 1st graders, and then this year. So this year's kindergarten and this year's 1st grade are the ones that we really want to be watching closely and looking to make sure they're making progress along the way, so that when they do get to 3rd grade, we don't have 25%.
Besides just giving you percentages, we can give you numbers when we present in the fall.
And then, how many would we have had without this program? I guess, because it's, not to reunite, but it sounds like it's a lot of paperwork and a lot of extra work for those teachers. And so is this program doing what we think it should be doing? Or is it before, when we weren't doing all this intervention paperwork stuff? Were, have we gained enough for the work that our teachers are doing and our parents?
What I'm hearing and what we're seeing in the surveys is that, yes, the teachers say there's a lot of paperwork. What I'm finding out is that the learning strategists, the people that are in charge of this at each of the schools are saying, teachers are now really paying attention to the interventions that are necessary to get the students to read. Not that, I'm saying this as a general statement, we have very good teachers out there. But sometimes, people didn't want to bring students to the intervention teams that the sites have because of the work, the paperwork involved in that. Now Read by Three requires it. So we may have some people who just, they wanted to keep doing it in their classroom, but they didn't want to take it to the district intervention team because of the paperwork and the time and the monitoring involved. This requires it, it's the law, it requires it.
You know, and I think about the SFA refinement that we hear about so often, and it's really a mixed bag when I talk to my friends who are teachers. And at some sites, it's like they feel freed because they can use it as a tool and supplement it and do what they need. And then other sites are still reporting that they're kind of still under the, kind of the thumb of that program. And so are there any strategies you have that you're employing to really kind of free that up and give those teachers the power to be creative in the classroom?
Working with our SFA Success for All Consultants and our quarterly leadership meetings, and then me working with our principals and our monthly PLCs that we have together. We have a two-hour PLC once a month. We'll be working with this data every month. I mean, that was pretty much the topic of last year's PLCs, but a lot of it was rolling out the system. Learning about the KTEA, learning about dyslexia, setting up professional development opportunities for teachers about dyslexia, setting up our schedule for rolling out those individual learning plans. This year, refining it. Last year, we rolled them out, it was after the parent conference time. Now that it'll all be done, it'll be done at the same time over our parent conference week. So now, this year, now that the system, that's why Nate set our goal high for moving kids this year, because our system is out there. Now it's all about that instruction and those interventions, and that's what we'll be monitoring. Not that we weren't monitoring that last year, but a lot of it had to do with just working with the consultants, working with NWA MAP, working with the folks for Brigants, working with the folks from KTEA, and getting our teachers trained as to what that was all about, and setting up expectations for an individual learning plan in the first place. That it wasn't just, oh, hmm, I have quite a few kids that are low on fluency, so I'm going to do one blanket intervention for every kid in my class. That's not, that's not a true intervention. But making sure that it's personalized to the individual needs.
It's not the learner-centered model of educating our students either, so. No, no, it's encouraging to hear what's going on, and it's, you know, what you said, it's not perfect, but it's moving in a good direction, so. Thank you for your work.
Mr. Walker, just to answer part of your question too, is one of the things I really want to focus on this year is being in those school sites with admin, with the ISs, because like you said, we have some sites that are at one level and others that are at another, and sometimes the information's not always being shared across sites. And we are a pretty small district, so it should be happening. So that's one thing with the ILPs and with the SFA refinements, is taking those things that are being successful at one site and making sure the other sites know about it and that they're trying to put those in place. And Ms. Wilkie, also, when you look at this, it's obvious that it worked. Because if you look at 3rd grade, we had 33% deficient. Had we done nothing out of the ordinary, those kids, if they would have learned a year's material in a year, we still would have been at 33%. And so the fact that we've dropped it so much means those kids not only learned what a normal kid would have in a year, but they had to have exceeded that to move above that 40th percentile. And I can go back and run, now that we know that 40th percentile is the deficiency rating, I could go back and run it for you guys for the year before, when we didn't have ILPs in place, and see how many students were before the 40th, below the 40th percentile at the start of the year? How many were below at the end of the year, when we didn't necessarily have ILPs in place, to see the difference between that data?
That doesn't take too much work. I'd appreciate that, but if it does, don't bother, because it's not going to matter.
We could include it in our next presentation.
Okay. And then the other thing, I think, having the full-day kindergarten, which we have, what, two years now of that? And now we have the full-day preschool for some of our targeted areas. I think that's really going to help your guys' number. So I think 20% is the least you should be able to get with those numbers in those areas, those groups. So good job, thank you.
And I just wanted to say that the data was impressive, and so I didn't want you to feel like I was being overly critical. I mean, that's good data, even the kindergarten, you didn't make the goal, but I mean, that's quite a reduction. And so I'm just, my point is, we want to get down to the numbers. We want to, you know, we don't want any kids that are being retained because of this, so.
And just one last question. As we go forward, and maybe you've already done this, do you partner with the library, with the reading programs, so that everything is like together?
We did do some partnerships with the library this year, especially with summer school we did, it was great. They, one of the things that the library did is they came out with their book cart, they have a mobile book cart, they pedal around the city, and they brought it to each of the sites, and we were handing out free books to all of our summer school students, which are those, of course, which are those students that probably don't have the books at home that we're targeting, which was wonderful. We're working on doing a connection between ID cards so that they can use their ID card when they go to the library, just encourage more library, then of course, there's the reading program that we are pushing with our students as well.
And then the library had a grant that they brought books for English, it was the English Language Learner Group. Is that correct? Do you want to speak about that a little bit?
They received a grant, and so they had a wealth of wonderful books that they showed each of the sites, and so then they had them on a rotating basis. And so they would send them out to the schools and be part of our library, so those students had access to those books. And then they'd rotate around to the other schools, and so it was a great program.
We can write a lot about the Carson City Library's partnership for that nomination for NASB.
Do we have any other questions from board members?
I have a couple. I think, if you all humor me though, I think I maybe, and some of you have probably heard this story, my children, I would think, come from a normal middle-income home, and my wife and I both have bachelor's degrees. And my son, when he started kindergarten, and he had done preschool, you know, since he was two or three, and he didn't know his alphabet even by the end of kindergarten. By 1st grade, we're doing major interventions, you know? And then literally, by 3rd grade, just a little extra work over that long of a time, he was above grade level by the end of 3rd grade. And now, my wife and I are having conversations like, is it right to tell our child we're not going to buy him any more books? Because he's insatiable. And so I think, and I myself am, always want things fast, and it was certainly a real test of patience, and everybody who's a parent knows things don't happen on your timeline always. And I think, like you said, it's good that this starts with the kindergarten, because it is unreasonable to expect this largest shift. With that, I think what, if I'm getting the flavor right, we almost would have rather seen that progress even from a 1 to a 2, you know, that data more than the big chunk data or both, because it's that progress, and that's what we always talk about. We want to know that we're moving all of these kids, even the deficient ones, and we don't want to still be, even though they're generally labeled deficient, it would be a lot more impactful, I think, if we could see, well, holy smokes, we moved them all a lot, you know? That's the sense I'm getting with the group. I do have a couple questions. How does the map testing line up with the Nevada Academic Content Standards? Are those, when the children are taking these map tests, by the time they're doing that, the SBACS that hopefully are testing those skills, is this all lining up so that we're teaching the same thing?
Yes. NWA MAP has gone through changes as a company to make sure that they were accommodating the Nevada Academic Content Standards, the Common Core, as well as, once the SBACS was in place, they were changing up their delivery online to put more SBACS-like questions and activities on the map assessment. They now vied for and received the state contract for this test, and that had to go through a statewide vetting process as well in order to make sure that they were doing the very thing you just asked.
And then the, one last question. The choice of using the REACH program for the summer instead of SFA, because SFA is specifically a reading program, and this is specifically supposed to be measuring reading, why did we choose to use a different program to expand the skills of the most deficient kids?
Well, the previous year, the reason we started with it, the year before this past summer, and the reason we did that was because for that year, the way that grant was written was that summer school was only available to our English Language Learner students, and REACH is a program for English Language learners. And it was all about giving those students more time in a literacy-based program to help them become more proficient, which, if you look at our data for our English Language learners, it's impressive. So this year, we decided that even though it was for English Language learners, and also it was for any student, not just English Language learners, we had found the year before that it was really a literacy-rich program. And I really invite you, you know, next summer when they do it, to come and look at it, because there's books, there's leveled readers, there's a technology piece to it, which we call, where they do a fluency piece, where they can read into the computer and listen to, and then they get to play it back so they can hear what they sound like when they read, and it shows them their errors. And there was just a lot to the program, it has great writing. So even though it wasn't our Success for All program, we thought it would be good for these students to keep them engaged also, to give them something different. They do Success for All all year long. So when summertime comes, we want to make it fun and something different for them to keep them engaged and to get the best results.
So would it be better to have more holistic, or can we, can we bring, because that program up there had grammar and writing also, I believe, right? Would that be something better to add in during the school year? But into that 90 minutes, we're, I'm thinking we're pretty restricted for time in the daytime, or am I envisioning the day wrong?
We do utilize the REACH program throughout the school year with our English Language Learner students. I know some of our, some of the sites, so probably some to more degree than to the others, but some of the sites use, will pull out small groups of students and go through their REACH program with them with different grade levels. So it is being utilized. After last summer, a lot of the teachers that taught summer school, and they, it was, because the online piece, we hadn't had before. And so we purchased it, and we tried it for summer school, and some of them were like, oh, wow, this is great. And so we even had teachers that were using that more. Mark Twain, I know I had a 5th grade teacher that had a low group of English Language learners, and they were really struggling with fluency. So she made that part of her 90-minute lesson, where they did that comprehension coach and listened to themselves and practiced their fluency daily, and she saw great results. So it is available.
Thank you. Do we have anything else? I think, thank you both. I know from speaking with both of you on a personal level, neither of you is going to let this go until it's successful, at least one of you now. But now you have a different control point, so I think you're both doing a wonderful job. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to number 10, Presentation and Discussion Regarding Student Disciplinary Trends in the Secondary Schools in the Carson City School District. This is for discussion only, it's going to have Mr. Stokes starting it off, and then we have Mr. Statler, Mr. Conley, Mr. Zona, and Mrs. Fuson here for support.
Thank you, Mr. Green, members of the board. Prior to the end of our school year last year, there was a request from the trustees to bring forward some information about our secondary school student discipline. And so I've met with our secondary principals and am grateful that they're here this evening. I prepared a brief presentation for you, and want you to know that our administrators are here to provide additional information or to respond maybe to individual questions. As you can imagine, it was important to me to give information about our school district and not necessarily try to identify some number or question about discipline at any one particular school. And so from that perspective, I want to start out by just sharing with you some thoughts. One, a goal of all of our schools, regardless of their secondary or elementary, is to promote student learning by maintaining a safe school environment. That just makes, I think, good common sense. When you think about your own home and raising your own kids, things seem to work a little better when there's an orderly, safe environment. And then as a added strength, I guess, to this thinking, from our strategic plan, our district's vision, the very first bullet states, every student must have the opportunity to excel and be prepared for success in post-secondary education or a chosen career. We've all been in the school business long enough that we know when kids make an egregious mistake of some kind, sometimes they're excluded from our programs. And so our administrators are faced every day with this bullet. How do and when do we make a decision that may or may not exclude a student from our activities? Or when does another student's activity preclude or interfere with another student who's behaving in school, having a hard time- who's behaving in school, having a hard time getting through school because of the actions of another? So I'm very proud of the work that our administrators do and all of our staff really because as I've looked over and as the records of students and as I have participated in student hearings regarding student discipline, our kids get a lot of chances. And so our staff members are very concerned with this consideration and they don't take any liberties or take this lightly in not making sure that they're giving due consideration to all of our kids. So general observations in the statements that I'll make tonight. First, it was evident by our numbers this year that our annual student disciplinary events are increasing. That shows up in our numbers. It was also a little tricky in putting some of this information together because in 2000, well, prior to last school year, our student information system was Power School, which had a different list of discipline codes in comparison to our new student information system, which is Infinite Campus. And so I want to make, I don't want to call it a disclaimer, but it is of sorts. And that is, in order for me to make this report tonight, especially from a historical perspective, there are some numbers that I had to make some personal judgments on. But I felt like that in listening to the trustees request this particular agenda item, that I kind of, I felt like I knew what you were asking me to find and to present and I believe I've done that. But if we were to make a complete record of all of the disciplinary issues, we would have to really go back and bring you forward a disciplinary code on every one of the conditions that we have in our system. So some other thoughts. Males tend to be more involved in student disciplinary events. Kind of a fact of life, I guess. Another evidentiary number that jumped off the page was that students, as they get older, tend to make less mistakes. They make better judgments. And so if you were to compare the overall numbers of a seventh grader against that of a 12th grader, you would see that as that student got older, they made better choices. With regard to timing, in August and January, those two months tend to have the lowest number of student discipline incidences simply because those months are only partial months. If you think about as the school year runs, we start school sometime, generally the third week of August. And in January, the end of Christmas break, kids come back, maybe the end of the first or first part of the second week of January. And then of course, as the school year progresses and towards the end of each semester, we tend to have the most number of incidents. So I gave here, again, some general categories. These categories don't specifically identify with the individual discipline codes. But again, thinking as to what my expected outcome of this presentation would be, you can see that the total number of incidents is listed there, but there's also an accompanying number of students involved. This is kind of interesting because when you think about the interaction that a school administrator has to become involved in, regardless of how the disciplinary issue started, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's a one-to-one correlation. So by having fewer students listed as the number of students involved, it means that you have some repeat offenders in there. You have some students who may be in trouble for the same or other infractions. If you look down at the bottom group of numbers, interference with instruction, the number of students involved is actually greater than the number of actual instances. And that would come about where maybe if you had a group of boys that maybe were giving a teacher a hard time, that may only be counted as one incident, but yet there were numerous students that were involved. You can see that that middle inappropriate behavior category, that takes in a number of student conditions. One would be insubordination, another one would be disregard for school rules or disrespect. And in some cases, could actually result in a catch-all type condition, sticking gum under the seat, you know, if you're breaking a school rule of some kind. So one of the challenges in keeping track of information associated with student behavioral incidences is are we doing a job of consistently reporting some of these events and trying to make sure that we have those specific events identified and using them in a similar, in a consistent fashion? I also took from our request that there was interest in how many events or number of students that might be involved with regard to showing acts of aggression in our past student information systems. These showed up in slightly different ways. But again, I've taken some liberties in trying to make sure I've reported trends and also the numbers associated with those things as I have available to me. Our principals felt it was important to show in this work that in comparison to other years, the possession of a controlled substance is actually going down. So while we do have some numbers that are increasing in our school district, there are some conditions that are showing a reverse trend. And I'm happy to say that especially in a time when recreational marijuana is becoming more available, our students are making better choices with regard to this while being at school. And then there's a number there associated with bullying and cyberbullying, which has been part of legislative sessions in the last three sessions. This particular slide shows, a little hard to see, sorry for that, but the general numbers show a comparison from the school years of 2015 through 2017 with the bar on the far right in each of these categories representing the school year just ending. And so you can see that there's a jump there in the inappropriate behavior category. The next group of data shows acts of aggression, which could include fights or threats, disruption of some kind where someone could get hurt, shows a slight reduction over the prior year. And then the next pieces of data shows that comparison of possession of a controlled substance while at school, which then that final piece of information shows theft, which is also an antisocial behavior that we're dealing with throughout each school year. And so while those numbers are not large, it does show a slight increase.
So. Mr. Stokes, before you leave that, I know when we started back in the day, when we changed over some of the programs and stuff, it changed the data or where it would be placed anyway.
Yes.
Is any of that going on here or we just have a rise in appropriate behavior? Or have we changed the definition?
Well, a little bit of both.
Okay.
On your, to respond. I know that we have had, and as I met with the principals and we talked about some of the circumstances that are happening at school, there was a time in Nevada when it was against the law to have an electronic device of some kind on your person. It was against the law to have pagers back in the day. It was against the law to have, not against the law, but it was against the school rules to not have these as a distraction at school. Now, especially with cell phones, students really strongly relate to activities that are part of their world as it applies to cell phones, whether it's video games, whether it's social media, whether it's even doing schoolwork. It's a big part of their lives. And yet when it becomes a part of a student disruption or part of a school event, it can turn into multiple events if a school authority asks for the student to surrender that phone and the student says, no, I'm not going to, and so things then compound. So I think that there are a variety of things that are just different with our schools now than when they were even 10 years ago, five years ago. I don't know if I have any colleagues who want to respond to that? Okay. So. Okay, very good. All right. So what are we doing and what are some of the responses that we have and with regard to student discipline and how do we manage our daily affairs? Of course, we believe that prevention and education is our greatest ally. We also know that not all students have the same training in their lives with regard to a lot of different things, including what is expected in society. At school, we expect students to be able to comply with directions from staff. That's how we maintain safety in our schools. But yet if a student has not benefited from maybe some of the things that other families have been able to experience, then they may be at a deficit. And so just like we talked about reading and needing to train and remediate for reading, I think that the same consideration has to be made for complying with school rules or just learning how to better assimilate into society. We are doing some of that in our schools. We benefit from good examples who are our employees and who help interject training or teaching moments when students get in trouble. We're fortunate to have caring staff, administrators. We now have the added assistance of social workers. And of course, our school counselors have always been on that front line. We're also lucky in Carson City, we have a number of folks who are specialized groups who reach out to youth. I think of all of our service clubs. I think of scout troops. I think of youth sports activities, church activities, all of those things where people learn how to get along and how to treat each other in public. And of course, we're also fortunate to have the resources that come to us through the Sheriff's Department with our school resource officers. So while prevention and education is key to improving some of the student actions, we also are required to take certain responses when things don't go well. We've talked about this as a group. We know that consistent consequences are an important aspect of this effort. And now with Infinite Campus, hopefully here to stay for a while, this last year will be a baseline. We'll be able to probably give you better data in future years because the student discipline codes are going to be managed in a way that's consistent across the district. Blended learning opportunities represent ways that instead of just saying to a student, you know, I'm sorry, but you're no longer going to be able to come to school for the next 25 days because you're being suspended. Well, blended learning is something that over time, we've been able to see great response from and see the benefits of this. And it's simply a combination of traditional classroom teaching along with that, that's part of online systems. And so if we do have to put a student out for some period of time, we have a way for them to stay up and to be maintained in their learning. In fact, this coming year will be our first introduction of elementary-related online processes. And so if we do have those students who are having difficulty in maintaining their composure while at school, again, rather than just being suspended for some period of time, they'll have access to online processes that will hopefully keep them academically up to date with what's going on at school. Juvenile probation, their offices have endorsed a parent project, which when a student is arrested and is adjudicated in some way, the parents are also mandated through the courts to become involved in this particular project. And while I don't know all of the details of that, I know that the school is also participating and becoming a partner within that project. And then the wraparound services, as mentioned early, from civic groups and also from the suggestions of our social workers, we're able to provide those services that happen or that are available outside of our doors. So I wanted to just kind of end my thoughts here by letting you know that I think it's time for a call to all of the people who live in Carson City. I think we live in a time when it does take us all to raise our children. That's one thing that I really value about Carson City is people are willing to give of time and resources to help other people's kids. I see that all the time in my work. And it's time to maybe talk about the golden rule. It's time to talk about, hey, you know, don't do that. If you don't like to be treated that way, then, you know, don't do that to other people. The book by Robert Fulgham, who wrote a book called, All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten, written in 1986. His first seven items apply directly to all of our kids and all of our adults. Share everything, play fair, don't hit people, put things back where you found them, clean up your own mess, don't take things that aren't yours, say you're sorry when you hurt somebody. So with that call to action to all of our community, I'd like to just say that I appreciate this opportunity to be involved. I think that the work that we do as a school district and as educators is extremely important. We're raising the next generation, those people that are going to take our places. They're going to be the principals and the superintendents and the board members for another time. And they will need to have all of these tools as they raise another generation of students. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions about any of the things that you saw here and I would also invite you to ask questions to any of our practitioners who are there on that front line every day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Stokes, and I know you said you purposely didn't want to break it down by site, but I'm just curious, generally speaking, at the middle school sites, you know, we have one school that's quite a bit larger, almost twice the size of the other. Do we see a proportionate increase in, you know, activities we don't want to have, you know, in poor behavior, given the numbers? And the reason I ask is, you know, when we're, not that we're going there, but when we look at things like rezoning or this, that and the other, you know, do we need to look at how big is too big for certain schools?
That's a great comparison, Trustee Cassiopoul. I think that if I could start from scratch, I would like to see our middle school smaller. I think it does make a difference having, just like in a large city, I think the more people you have together in any situation, there's more opportunities for things to go wrong. I think that there were a few things that happened last year at Carson Middle that caused a few things to be heightened to a state where there was some public events that happened and that information was well-spread out. But in comparison, I don't think that it was any greater than, improportionally, in proportion, I guess I should say, to what happened at Eagle Valley Middle School. I know certain, as I went through the numbers, there were certain things that were actually even a little higher at Eagle Valley than they were at Carson Middle. And so again, looking at this thing in a very global way, I think we can identify that there were a few things that were significant events that happened at Carson Middle, but they didn't seem to be over the top. In fact, they were actually a little lower than what last year's numbers showed. But again, it's a little bit like apples to oranges because we were using that other student information system. Don't want that to sound like too much double talk, but there were some considerations in putting the numbers together.
Well, and I'll just add just one more thing. I think the prevention and education and response, I mean, I agree. But I think a lot, what we're doing well in these schools and, you know, different levels of school, I guess it's harder to do. levels of school, I guess it's harder to do, but I think what we're doing really well is giving these kids opportunities to be engaged in what I'll just call extracurricular activities. You know, whether, whether it's, you know, for the kids that like math and science, those types of programs, athletic type activities for some of the other kids and, you know, like they say, idle hands. So if you, you know, if we keep giving these kids outlets, positive outlets, I think a lot of these kids might otherwise go down a wrong path. They might find something that interests them, and that motivates them to stay on a better path, or if nothing else occupies their time in a, in a way where they, they don't have as much idle time to make poor decisions. So I think we're doing a good job there as well.
Thank you. Mr. Swerzik?
Yeah, Richard, one of the committees, I said, on Partnership Carson City, you know, we set aside some money for ongoing mental health issues with juveniles or, or the teenagers or students. And I think Kathy talked to you about, and this comes back to being disruptive in class and what it takes away from the rest of the students that are there to learn. And have you worked out a, some kind of a plan that you might be able to, we might be able to utilize that deal by maybe helping the students in a different way that are causing the disruptions at an early age, maybe?
We are all open to any possible resource, and I know that there are a number of them here in the community. In fact, I know that we'll be talking a little bit about social work here in a few minutes, and, and those kinds of things are very helpful. You know, I'm thinking of Carson Middle School and the Makers Club, and that group stood in front of you not too long ago. And, and those students and families that are able to take advantage of those kinds of things, great benefit. And we see student groups that are part of Partnership Carson City that, that impact their peers. And so, yeah, it's just a matter of really getting to as many students as we can and encouraging them to take advantage of these programs.
And the One Up Club, yeah, we'll talk about that when we get to the social workers and things, but I'd like to hear from each of the principals. I want to know, you know, you're, but you're here, are you seeing, I don't know if it's more disruption, but longer disruption and more disruption that would jeopardize students?
First of all, hi, everybody. Good to see you again. Hope you had a good summer. I did. A couple trends that I see, I still believe, oh, Lee Conley, sorry, principal at Eagle Valley. I see a couple of things going on. I still believe that 95% of our kids are fantastic and have fantastic parents that support them, I think unfortunately. We have 5% or so that cause usually 90% of the issues, it seems like. And I feel bad, you know, it's, it's just unfortunate that not all the kids can get the support that they maybe need and that parents don't always know how to give that support. So that's where I think it's important that we get the community involved like Mr. Stokes was asking for, and that we keep providing these different resources for not only the students but for parents. And I think that we've come a long way just in the last year or two in Carson City by elevating our recognition that we need more services like that. So I think if anything else, I kind of go back to what Mrs. Kimo was saying about read by three. It's a law, you know, it's kind of a law now, so you have to be a little more alert to it. I think now that we have the social emotional component, it's kind of like No Child Left Behind even, way back, if you remember what that is. Not saying that I agreed with it all, but I think something that it did very well was it raised awareness of some things that needed to be made aware of. I think the same thing with the social emotional items. I think we recognize that more parents and more kids nowadays, it's unfortunate in our society, need more help than they ever have. Things are different than it was when we were in elementary school. Society's different. So I think it's a big kind of a global, and I think it's a societal issue, and I, I hate to say this, but I think the trends in schools are mirroring what we see in society. I think there's a, while still most people, and I will tell you, I prefer the, the living things with four legs and feathers over people. I do. I'm not always a big human fan because I know that humans make just stupid errors and mistakes and they can do otherwise if they're taught properly. But anyway, I think that humans and kids and parents are still mostly good and they want to do the right thing. I think the trend, a disturbing trend that I have noticed is there are, there's a small number of kids that really have gone a little more ballistic and they go over the top, more so than in the past. So there are certain kids and certain parents that have gotten harder to deal with and more belligerent and more, I don't care what you say, they do it to the police officers all the time. You see it on the news all the time. They do it to teachers, they do it to administrators. And when a kid just flat out says, no, I'm not going to do what you tell me to do, it's kind of like we're limited on what we can do as well. Because again, we're a little more limited on what we can do disciplinary wise, but at the same time, I think we're better now in education about giving more options and keeping kids in school. Back when I was in school, it was I got a paddle and I got kicked out of school. I didn't because I was a good kid. But a lot of kids that, you know, that happened to. Nowadays, it's we try our best, and I think what Mr. Stokes said is very important to remember. We give these kids a lot of chances. We try to get their parents involved early. We're a lot more proactive than we used to be, but we still see, in my mind, the disturbing trend that there are a very small group of kids that, and parents, that just seem to think that, eh, the rules don't apply to me. And that's unfortunate. And, you know, you're not always, you can't make them listen, you have to convince them to listen and that it will behoove them and be better for them in the future. But that's one thing I think that we've done very well in this district is we've given more attention to those kids that really need it, and we flat out say, these are the good things that we can do for you, these are the good things that can come if you follow these rules. I know right now, I know Dan's doing it, I know Mr. Sadler, I know I'm doing it, we've got assemblies, you know, for kids, and we're working in our advisory or his encore classes. And, and all of our certified teachers along with their classified personnel are, you know, making lesson plans so that we can talk about those things that are appropriate and inappropriate and why, and just get that discussion going. So I think we're being more proactive than ever, and I think that's a good thing because, you know, we get, we have to be more alert to what's going on, but I, I do feel like we've come a long way in the district in just the last couple of years in providing that and being more aware of that stuff. So if there is a trend, it's that one trend I spoke of, knowing though that still most kids and most parents are there for the right reason and they're going to do the right thing.
Just one question. Do you use the, the resource officer at your school? How is, how is that utilized with, like what you just described?
I love, my dad was a police officer for 30 years. So I really respect, you know, what they do and I know what they can do positively. So in my mind, it's just another tool that I have, but quite honestly, I can only speak for mine, but I think it's true of most. My deputy putzer, Matt Putzer is mine, and he has been so good about working with us as administrators and saying, I don't want to be the hammer. We don't want to just go straight to the police officer and say, okay, now you're arrested. My philosophy, and I know the philosophy of my colleagues, is you keep the issue as close at hand and close to the source as possible. So I even tell my teachers, I just told my new hires this yesterday when I was talking with them, when it comes to progressive discipline and classroom management, I believe what they do in the classroom is more important, and the sooner they, or the more automatic they go to me as the hammer, or if I go to deputy putzer as the hammer, the less respect those kids are going to have for you as a teacher. And they're going to think that I know how to get this guy's goat, I know how to tick him off. And so if I want to get out of class, I'm going to do this, and then I'm going to go to Conley's office, and then he's going to get mad, and I'm going to go to the deputy, and then I get out of school. Well, we're trying to prevent that as much as possible. So, yeah, we use them when it's absolutely necessary, but what I've seen is it's been a great opportunity for the police officers to be proactive and get to know the kids and establish relationships with them. And so I think it's been a great addition, and in my mind, it has not been a punitive addition. It's been something that's been very well worth, and it's just another team member that's going to benefit the kids, and we can be more proactive than ever.
Oh, let's see, else come up?
Thanks.
For the record, Dan Sadler, principal of Carson Middle School. I, I would echo all of Mr. Conley's thoughts there. Our schools, though very different in size, are very similar as far as how we work with students, how we respond students, excuse me, respond to students. Certainly the size of our school does present some challenges for us. And I think in reference to what Mr. Stokes was referring to, we did have a couple incidents this year that escalated in front of a large audience, like in front of our entire student body. And it's very unfortunate that those took place. I don't know that those were any bigger incidents necessarily than we've had take place in the past. However, the audience was much larger, so there was a lot of discussion about it. And we had a couple incidents where students didn't feel safe as a result of that. And, and that's probably our biggest challenge is maintaining that safe environment, just perceptually, so that students can focus on learning and not be focused about, I just saw a student get in a fight and I'm really concerned about that, or I saw a student who was really disrespectful to the principal or vice principal. So those aren't necessarily new behaviors. I know that those things existed, and this is not a scapegoat or an excuse, that they're things that existed when I was a student, when it was Carson Junior High School. I think we're much more well-prepared to respond to that. We have a lot of programs that are going proactively, like Mr. Conley said, 95% of the students are doing what they should do, and they're focused on learning and then really creating a respectful learning environment. And we have a small population of students that really challenge us on that. So those students still deserve an education, and we're still trying to respond to them and, and work with those students. And we see a lot of those students grow as they go on to Pioneer and Carson High School. And, you know, some of it is just being young adolescents as well, that they don't always make the right decision. And that's a typical characteristic of a, of a young adolescent is learning from mistakes as well. So we're there to guide them through that process and look forward to doing the same this year.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Sadler?
I just have one. And Dan, okay, you, you have a large population, you have a large school. Just on what you said, do you feel that, you know, as the principal, you're, it's okay, you can, you can handle what's, what's given to you? Or do you need, I'm saying, do you need additional help?
I'm sorry, ask that second part, I didn't hear.
No, I mean, it's, you know, what you just described, do you need more help? Or, or do you think you have it, like you said, it's just kids being kids?
Well, I don't think either of those correctly cover all bases, to be quite honest with you. I've, I've never looked at poor student behavior as, oh, that's just kids being kids, we're just going to deal with that. We always need to respond to it, much like we do with, with learning anything in school. You know, learning behavior is something, I think, we used to just assume in education that students understood what the expectations were, and when they didn't meet those expectations, we punished them. And we know that students come from a wide variety of backgrounds, and what they consider the norm at home isn't the same as the norm in school. So we have to teach them about our culture, we have to support them in that. So as far as supporting our students and supporting our school in doing that, yeah, I think we don't need additional help. I mean, we could have additional administrators, but that's, that's just going to be supporting the same programs and supports that, that we have in place right now. And, and I don't have an easy button for it to just say, this will all go away, you know, I mean, we're, we're going to continue to work through challenges as a school, as any school will. And when we consider the age range of students that we're working with and the wide range that represents our, our town of Carson City and all walks of life that we have that we support, we meet students where they are and we try to move them up. We try to help them grow. So I think we're, we're meeting that challenge at Carson Middle School. And like I said, from time to time, you might get wind of things that are going through the school, and I think we, we just have a larger audience, so some of that information, you know, especially with social media now, I mean, those, those are challenges that, that we work through. But when it comes to day-to-day operations of the school, I think we're well-staffed and well-prepared to handle the, the tasks that are coming our way. Numbers-wise, we're continuing to grow, so I think that's something we eventually, certainly not on this agenda, do need to discuss, but I think what we've been supporting, if we went back and looked at comparative data actually, that we, we have a better grasp on student behavior than we have in the past.
Have you seen an impact from the social workers with your disciplinary problems?
Yeah, absolutely. Just that connection, having them be part of the conversation's been phenomenal. We've got a great team all the way around with our leadership team, but adding social workers in the last year has been quite impactful, just to have them there and be part of the conversation, the way that they connect with, not only with the students but with the families, working through students with truancy issues, behavior, any type of support we can provide a student, it's just another layer that we haven't been able to provide in the past that, that we're now connecting with. So we've really connected with our social workers on our social emotional learning program and bringing that school-wide. They've really been pioneers and partners with us, and we're looking forward to doing more with that this year.
Anything else? You guys want to hear from Mrs. Fuson too, and Mr. Zona?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've gotten into their summer.
Who's next?
I'm Jason Zona, for the record, principal of Pioneer High School. How can I help you? The original question was, did we see long-term disciplinary issues? Is that what your question was, Ron?
At Pioneer High School, I mean, you've been nominated for doing some super work. What's changed? I mean, have you, are you having the same disciplinary problems or, or you found a way to, to address those in, in a better way?
I think over the many years I've been there now, the big thing is hiring and who we bring on board to the team and how they handle students. I had a notebook, probably the size of a very thick LA phone book worth of referrals this last year, but they weren't as severe as in the past. You know, I think how the teachers treat the students, what they will write up and what they won't, the relationships they build with students and the families really helps. Our size, you know, our whole school is an intervention for many reasons. So we keep adding those layers, but I have to really thank the grant funding for the social worker position. Our, our social worker Danielle Langham does a super job. She works with our counselor. It's like having another, a layer of support at every, every aspect. We have a truancy clerk that, you know, says hello to kids every morning, knows them by name, birthday cards, just that connection. When we used to do a robo-dial, or if I didn't get to kids who were missing school, Sandy Granucci is there and she has them in the office, and I join in when it's, when it's rough. So we have, we have great people, and I think that's, that's changed. The, the amount of activities have changed, going outdoors with kids and adding medical CTEs, so having those opportunities, showing them why they go to school, critical, so.
I have to admit, Sandy's got a personality that is just perfect for that truancy thing because they don't even feel like they're in trouble. She's just like this little loving mother making sure they're okay. It's not, you're in, you know, why aren't you in school? It's kind of like, well, what's going on? Why aren't you here? Kind of thing. And that, I think that position's been amazing for that, that responsibility. She's just perfect for that.
She has a loving intensity about her.
Perseverance, she's very, keeps going, keeps going, keeps going after kids, so.
You know, the other thing though, when all of our levels run out and when, when the parents are not going to cooperate or the students, when we finally get to that point, we have online. So, and we use online during the day for everybody for all ranges, but if there's a student who's just not going to follow the rules and the parents aren't going to help us do that, you know, then there's a time where you can go off campus and, and get your, your work done, so. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. We'll go on to Mrs. Fuson.
I am Natasha Fuson, principal at Carson High School. I don't know that I have a whole lot of more background information or more to discuss or what has, to put on the table than what's already been discussed by my colleagues. I, I will say, we've looked at our individual school data, and actually, we've looked at trends for the past three years, and we have seen an increase in discipline issues on our campus. The vast majority of them do have to deal with insubordination of, of our young adult students not following direction of adults on campus. And that's something that we are really trying to address through the social emotional learning curriculum. We actually put that under the umbrella of workplace readiness skills at the high school level. The way you need to be able to act in a professional environment for our students is, is at least it makes it more age-appropriate or grade-appropriate for them, and they receive it on a, on a, a little bit more open-minded. So that's something that we're working on. Some other things that we've really done in the past year as a, as a team, a leadership team, is really started thinking of out-of-the-box ways that we can work with our kids. Our social workers have been just amazing in terms of a support for our school. Our social workers have been just amazing in terms of a support for our school, and I'm gonna tell you specifically on our data, you're gonna see increased levels of discipline simply because of the social workers. And what I mean by that is when we have students who are struggling to be successful in their academics, there is usually a personal reason behind that, lack of success at the school, right? Life is happening. And for kids, that can be myriad different things that happen. When our social workers get involved and can really work with that family and that student to dig deeper, we sometimes find out that there's issues of where the student feels that they're being bullied or not treated fairly by their peers. Okay, we can work with that student. Our social workers, for instance, have done groups with female students on the mean-girl culture, which is an actual thing, and working with our female students to how to appropriately express themselves on social media and with other females. It seems to be very common, more common amongst females than males, when it comes to that particular issue. So, our social workers have identified that as a need and done groups with our students. So, that's been helpful. We have a teacher this year who said, you know, how about instead of regular lunch detention, we have a meditation detention, and I'm gonna teach the kids how to breathe deeply, think clearly, focus, and maybe make better decisions. So, we've tried that. We have an after-school program coming online next year, because some students, quite frankly, just in a school of 22 to 2,300 kids, it's difficult for them to function with everything else going on in their life. But yet, they feel very connected to the high school, which I love, you know? Mr. Zona's wonderful over at Pioneer. Yes, that's an option for kids, but some of our kids are just, no, I wanna be a Carson High kid. And that's great. So, then let's figure out how to meet your needs and think out of the box. So, we've worked a lot with Pioneer in terms of incorporating online learning at Carson High School, so our students can do full-time online at Carson High, or they can do part-time online and part-time in-person. And in the case of the after-school program, so those students that we're working with identifying now will be coming from 2:30 to 4 o'clock, Monday through Thursday, instead of during the regular day with all of the other students and meeting with some of our teachers on campus, doing their academics online and being able to meet with the social workers for interventions and extra support that way. So, for us, it's been a matter of really trying to identify how to meet the needs of our kids in a very creative way, so that they can stay connected and not drop out or not, you know, look for options outside of our district, because we don't have the resources, 'cause we do here. So, we wanted to make sure that's available. So, all of those things have come into play. You know, I think, I've yet to meet a student who truly and honestly wants to misbehave or wants to be unsuccessful, right? I mean, nobody wakes up and goes, you know, I think I'm just gonna be unsuccessful today because that's what I want to do. It's just that we have to be able to find out what's going on in their lives and what resources and supports and what program they need that's gonna help them achieve their goals, graduating and getting prepared for what happens beyond high school. So, those are some of the things that we're looking at and trying. And I think that's just something about, you know, our country and how we're gonna evolve in terms of the look of education anyways. So, I'm glad to say, I think Carson City is actually ahead of the game. You all know I've worked in two other districts as well, Clark County and Washoe, and I will tell you, I feel as the principal of the high school that we have more resources available for our students, and we have more community support in Carson City than I've had in my other two districts. So, I think that is a testament to your support of our school district and of our school district leadership. So, all in all, I think, you know, we have what we need to get it done. So, we just have to make sure we match the kids with the interventions.
Do we still have the freshman transition class?
We do have freshman transitions class. So, we're being a little bit more flexible with freshman transitions in the upcoming years. So, for instance, students who are taking health occupations in their freshman year can opt out of freshman transitions, health, because they can get that health credit, and our health occupations teachers have agreed to teach those transition skills that were taught in the health transitions class within that health occupations class, and our ROTC folks are on board, so they're doing the same thing. So, we're trying to free up the availability for some of our ninth graders who are going to get that curriculum embedded elsewhere to be able to do that. So, where we used to require 100% of our freshmen to take that class, now if they have another option through health occupations or through ROTC, they won't be in that class, some of the students.
Do we have any other questions?
My question would just be for Mr. Stokes, or it's more of a comment. You know, I think that when I talk to teachers, it's primarily at the elementary level, the concern I'm getting about behaviors in these schools. And I think that that's a discussion that we need to have about these... I think Mr. Sadler was talking about these explosive behaviors that are just kinda prolonged. I think that when I talk to some of these elementary teachers, it seems to be an increasing occurrence and increasing frustration for them. And so, I don't know if maybe that's part of the strategic plan to get with the social workers or whatnot and put some kind of interventions in place to help these teachers in these schools, but it seems to me that's... I hear much more from elementary teachers about discipline than I do from secondary, and that's just a personal observation.
And that may go back to elementary school counselors no longer are in the... And I say it seriously.
I know, 'cause you and I have been on that.
The teachers or the principals or whatever, you talk about being disruptive. An elementary school counselor could take a child or something that's really explosive away from the classroom setting, and now we've put a lot of the burden on the teacher themselves at the expense of the other kids' learning. And so, that's something we... Do we have social workers in elementary schools?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I think what Mike brings up, it needs to be looked at a little bit in the elementary. Maybe we could have them come in and give us a little update?
Okay.
And I think that's one of the reasons why I was asking about the social workers, 'cause I think as a board, we've been lucky enough to get grants to cover those, but I think we have to keep that in the back of our minds since we lost the counselor fight, that these resources are making a difference. And so, that if at one time we do lose funding, we've now heard what a difference it makes, and I think we have to make sure that we have a priority and are looking at that down the line, AJ, so that if it comes up, we'll know what we're looking at, because that grant funding's not gonna stay there forever. Thankfully, the governor has known that this is a problem and is... And we're one of the benefits of it, but down-looking long-term, we really have to think about, 'cause we have seen the problems when we cut the counselors. And that was a huge fight during that budget thing, and there was just no way to say that there just wasn't the money without cutting programs or people. And so, I was really thankful when we found out we were getting the social worker grant, but I think you, just in the back of your minds, that we have to remember that is a grant-funded position. And so, that they're making a difference in our kids' lives and their learning. So, just to keep that in the back of your minds in case we lose that, that we have to figure out a way to fund those.
Yeah, thank you. Agreed. I think, well, Mr. Stokes and I kinda talked about it yesterday, and maybe it will come up later. Also with that, a grant-funded position is not secure. So, when you're looking for continuity and security and you're good at your job, you're probably not gonna stay in a grant-funded job too. So, it's just another component to that. Is there any other questions for this? Well, thank you very much. It was a good report.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for taking the last bit of your summer to show up for a school board meeting. We'll move on to item 11.
Now, run, Mike.
Yeah. Discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 522, Student Sponsored Publications. This is the second reading. It's for possible action, and we will listen to Mrs. Kima.
Mrs. Susan Kima, for the record. Required changes to Policy 522 are mandated by Senate Bill 420, which changes Nevada Law 388.077. All requested changes from the first reading have been incorporated into this version of the policy. The revisions are in red italics. If there aren't any additional changes, I recommend approval of Policy 522.
Mr. Walker?
Mrs. Kima, I just wanna say, after editing a paper of my own and finding this error no less than five or six times, I'll say that at the very end of the second-to-last paragraph, there's a comma after educational processes that isn't needed unless you wanna add a subject to the second part. So, from substantial disruptions of the educational process, it must be protected. I'm not sure we need that comma there.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
I move that the Carson City School Board District, School District Board of Trustees adopt the revisions as presented and approved August 8, 2017, as a revised date on CCSD Policy 2... Or 522, Student Sponsored Publications with the changes by trustee Walker.
We have a second? Was that Mr. Carini? Oh, Mr. Cassioppo. So, we have a motion by Mrs. Wilkie and a second by Cassioppo. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Do we have any public comment on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, all of them. The motion passes, and we will move on. Agenda item number 12, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Proposed Changes to CCSD Policy 515, Student Education Records. This is the second reading. It is for possible action, and Mrs. Kima again.
Thank you. Policy 515 incorporates recent revisions to Chapter 432 of Nevada Law. Once this policy is approved and a memorandum of understanding is in place, the district will be able to provide educational records to child welfare agencies for children who have a case plan and are in custody of that agency.
Thank you. Do we have any board questions?
Can I make a motion? So, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the revisions as presented and approved August 8, 2017, as the revised date on CCSD Policy 515, Student Educational Records.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Carini. Do we have any board discussion? Public comment?
I do have one thing that I would like to add, and that is, yesterday, we did some training with our office managers on this draft policy, and then in the spring, we had the state Nevada Department of Ed brought out some federal trainers that were actually very entertaining throughout the year, a day on this particular subject, and we have reached out to the feds to see if we could get the same folks back to train more of our district folks in the future. So, I just want you to be aware of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hundred percent. Ayes have it. Moving on. Item 13, Discussion and Possible Action to Eliminate CCSD Policy 530, Social Events and Student Organized Trips. This is the second reading. It's for possible action with Mrs. Kima.
This policy is redundant. The information staff and parents need regarding field trips is located in Policy and Regulation 213, titled Field Trips and Excursions. I recommend removing Policy 530.
Do we have any board discussion? Somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve August 8, 2017, as the eliminated date on CCSD Policy 530, Social Events and Student Organized Trips.
A motion by Mr. Swerzik, second by Mr. Walker. Board discussion? Public comment? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Everybody? Moving on. Item number 14, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Proposed Changes to CCSD Policy 213, Field Trips and Excursions. Second reading, this is for possible action with Mrs. Kima.
Suggested changes from the first reading have been made to Policy 213. Approval is recommended at this time.
Any board discussion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the revisions as presented and approved August 8, 2017, as a revised date on CCSD Policy 213, Field Trips and Excursions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Swerzik.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Board discussion?
Now, with the regulations changed then, I see the policy was, there's no more of the limitation, well, I don't know if there ever was a limitation in the policy on the two field trips, but that language was changed in the regulation also. Here, we talked about the strategic plan, and you said we're doing budget limitations, and we've got some criteria. So, that was, the regulations were also changed?
Yes. We published our regulations.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Any public comment? Okay. Vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Hundred percent. Item 15, Discussion on Newly Proposed CCSD Policy 275, School Social Workers, Safe School Professionals Program. This is the first reading. It's for discussion only, and we'll have Mrs. Kima and Mr. Calario.
Susan Kima, for the record. The Nevada Department of Education's Office for a Safe and Respectful Learning Environment recommends that districts develop policy around the work of our safe school professionals. Mr. Dave Calario, our consultant leading our district's Safe School Professional Programming, drafted Policy 275. This proposed policy and corresponding regulation, which you will review in the next agenda item, helps to explain, define, guide what so, school, safe school professionals do to contribute to students' emotional, emotional, and academic learning experiences. At this time, we'll entertain any thoughts and discussion.
Do we have anything?
I just, under the second paragraph, we talk about the emotional and social development of children. Maybe we could change that to students, because some of our students are 18, and they're not...
Children?
A child. It's technical. It's not...
I think it makes it consistent.
You know, when we talk about our clients, they're students, and then when we can talk about the parents, they're children.
That could be, yeah. You're right.
Well, so, do you want to change it to students?
Makes it consistent with a lot of our other policies.
I agree. Any other suggestions? Mr. Walker?
You know, I just think the third paragraph seems to be a huge run-on, so we might wanna look at breaking that up or adding some commas or other punctuation marks in between some of those ands and other clauses in there.
Sure. We'll bring that back to you next board meeting.
I do have a comma that I think Mrs. Crossman would have, an Oxford comma situation, that I believe she would have brought up. In the second paragraph, the SSPs will contribute to the development of a healthy, safe, and supportive... I think she would have wanted one after "safe" in consistency with all the other policies.
Good catch.
And that would go down to that third paragraph also, but I think if we rewrite that, that would all be taken care of. Do we have any other suggestions?
Just on reference, so, Mr. Calario, you read and helped with this, and you think it covers all your people?
Hi, excuse me. For the record, Dave Calario, Sir Vice President and Board Members. Yes, it does, and I also, after writing this, in addition to running this by Mrs. Kima and Mr. Stokes, also ran it by our executive director at the state's Department of Education, and they looked at it, and they had no recommendations. So, yeah, and as a matter of fact, they have, and humbly spoken, they said that when this is final and approved, both the policy and regulations, if we could share that with them, so this could be... them, so this could be, is, in their words, and maybe they're being too kind to model for other school districts in the, in the state. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Sue. See, you weren't even going to tell us that part. Okay, and pat you on the back.
Well, that's kudos to Mr. Calario. It's nice to have a master's degree, a social worker with a master's degree. He's, he's an independent licensed social worker. He's got a lot of experience. His previous work experience has also contributed to this. He's the author. He's.
We appreciate it. It's nice.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have anything else? All right, thank you.
Dave, let me ask you a question before we go to the regulation. Got some technical things on that, but, you know, we had discussions earlier, you know, about this grant funding, and I know we're off subject maybe, but it ties into policies. What do you think? I mean, you've seen enough now that from your professional perspective, this works. But the people, your social workers that are working, don't have benefits, and that's a big issue. And I don't know if I'm asking what might be a solution to that, I mean, or do we incorporate it in our, but I don't know how we go about this, but you made a significant impact, and legislatively, was there any mechanism to, with this grant funding, to go forward and give the results?
I think.
It's kind of like this policy is dependent upon this.
I think we're getting, I think we're getting off subject here. Hey, so, Mr. Pavlakas, does the regulation maybe give us a little bit more leeway of asking some questions on the program?
Well, I think you've had a couple of topics tonight. One was the counselors in the elementary schools, and now, I think Trustee Wilkie raised the issue as well, and now Trustee Swerzik. So, it sounds like you want an agenda topic at some point about what will you do in order to make sure that these social workers are permanently funded positions.
Okay, well, I'll write, oh, yeah, I'll write that down, and then we'll, we'll save it for another time.
We'll save our response.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it.
Do we have anything else with this one? Okay, and we'll move on to item number 16, Discussion on, and so you guys know, I know normally we'll take public comment after all this stuff is seen as, if they're not beating down the doors, I just, not wasting the time. So, Discussion on, number 16, Discussion on Newly Proposed CCSD Regulation 275, School Social Workers, Safe School Professionals Program. This is for discussion only, and once again, it's Mrs. Kima and Mr. Calario.
Mrs. Kima, for the record. The proposed regulation explains the expectations of safe school professionals to provide support and intervention through a three-tiered approach, both individually and with the help from the community resources for our students and their families. We have spelled out in detail that three-tiered approach, as well as general job description and performance responsibilities for our safe school professionals. We'll entertain comments and suggestions at this time.
No grammar. I just thought this was greatly written, because as a parent, I could go look up the policy, and I knew exactly what steps were going to be taken, and I thought, and it was very clear. It wasn't all muddled, and I really liked how the clarity was, and the steps were, were real easy.
Yeah, and, going back to our earlier conversation with the, with the principals, the one thing that I know, and Dave, we talked a little bit about this, is that peer-to-peer connection is, is one step, one more step, and I, and to me, it seems like this would be the perfect place in the regulations, and specifically the one-up club. You, you mentioned suicide in here, but, but this covers all the social, emotional needs. How do you identify those students early on that may need some help? Instead of reacting, you're just a little bit ahead of the game. And, you know, I talked to the students in the one-up, I said, you know, everybody is well-meaning and intention, and what, they, they just told me, they said, you won't recognize when you see a struggling student, but we do. This is, how would you incorporate that activity to where they're actually part of your, your program? That the social workers would have this group, and, and that information, would, there'd be a flow of information that would actually be, as I said, it'd be, instead of reacting, it might head off some things. So, I just want your comments on that.
For the record, Dave Calario, Mr. Swerzik, typically in regulations or procedures or policies, specific programs are rarely referenced, because new programs could come from that, but it is part of the social and emotional learning. Maybe perhaps I hear you saying that we can strengthen this by adding that programs through the social and emotional learning aspect will be developed and implemented, maybe without naming them, because we don't know. But, but I hear what you're saying, and I think it's a good suggestion. That would be, I think, a good example of, of either a tier-one or a tier-two service. Tier-one is more, meant more for prevention, to try to reach as much of the school as possible, but without mentioning specific programs.
Right, no, right, just the peer-to-peer connection, without mentioning a specific club, organization, whatever. It's, because it could be many as we move forward, but that peer-to-peer connection more and more is becoming just a way of, of preventing a lot of catastrophic events, so, whatever, if you could just.
I will look at this to see where I can use language that would help get that across, and encourage our schools that are doing programs that maybe mention the peer-to-peer. I do like that. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other suggestions, comments? Seeing none, unless you guys have anything else to add, we'll, we'll move on. Thank you very much. You did a really good job writing this, and, and as, as our notes had said, too, the program's been in place a little over a year now, and it's, from all the reports we've all received, I, I think it's been quite impactful, as you could tell by our passion for figuring out how to make sure we're keeping people, too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and Board Members, and thank you, Mr. Stokes and Mrs. Kima. They've been very, very supportive of suggestions or ideas that I've brought forth, and have been given great input, so thank you. Thank you.
Good. Item number 17, Informational Update on Staffing for the 2017-2018 School Year, including a report on the district's effort to fill vacant positions. This is for discussion only, and it will be with Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Green, members of the board. Knowing in advance that Dr. Delphin would not be here tonight, I volunteered to present the information that Human Resources provided me. Happy to say that even just today, we found and offered contracts to two special ed teachers, one at Eagle Valley Middle School and one at Carson Middle School, and also hired a para-pro at Eagle Valley Middle School. So, in addition to that, there have been a few other slight changes within our numbers that were in your board packet, to include still a need to hire 18 classified positions and 12 teacher vacancies. The, the conditions associated with special education, we have six special ed para-pros that are, we're still needing to hire, and now seven special education teachers. The, the hiring of one individual today was actually more of a transfer, because he had the right license, but that created then a math teacher vacancy at Carson Middle School. So, in addition, that's an additional teacher to the ones in your packet, so we're still looking for a science teacher at Carson Middle School, looking for a fifth-grade teacher at Fritsch Elementary, a science teacher at Pioneer High School, and a computer teacher at Seliger Elementary School. We actually are in a better position this year in terms of regular education teachers being hired than we were last year, so that's good news. I, I see that from the newspaper articles that you may have been receiving from Mr. Davis, we are in good company, if that's what you can call it, from Lyon County and also Washoe County, both who have recently had articles that they, too, are experiencing a lack of available teachers to hire. We, we believe that we will still have hiring going on right through the end of the school year, or the start of the school year and into the school year, and so, so it's expected that these numbers will continue to change, but it's, it's getting close. So, we have had other years where we've started the school year without having a full staff. I do know that most universities will graduate students at about this time of year for final completion of their program, so we hope that we can land some of those yet before we, before we have the school year start. So, we'll keep advertising, we'll keep seeking individuals that may have teacher licensure. We are in conversation with some of our retired staff in the areas where you have provided us to consider retired teachers under the hard-to-fill conditions, and we'll keep doing our very best until we get everybody hired.
Mr. Walker?
So, you know, I'm curious as to with the ARL, how many of these new hires are alternative routes to licensure, and if they all have license currently, so will they actually have their licenses by the first day of school, and if not, what is our plan for that?
When we violate state law, if those individuals, well, in order to pay those individuals, they must be credentialed. So, if they're alternative route to licensure, they at least have to have a sub-license, and then if they're still working on that full credential, they can take whatever steps they need to for that. Typically, when they receive that official go-ahead from the State Department of Education, they are given a provisional license, then, which gives them three years to, to meet those requirements of the alternative route to licensure.
And that's my question. So, do we have, do all of our alternative rights route to licensure teachers currently have their license, or how many do we have with sub-licenses?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information. I can, I can get that for you, though, and send it out to everybody.
Mr. Swerzik?
Yeah, I want to go back to, to yesterday, the new hires. I like what Terry Pryor did, and this is, this relates to this. She says, you know, you guys, you know, you're new here, you, you wanted to come to Carson City, now talk to your friends, and ask, you know, the same thing. Is that going to be done to all of our teachers? I thought that was a great recruiting tool, and the way she presented it, yeah, I think I'm like a phone call, yeah. So, anyways.
And I was ready to tell them we'd help them move, too. We have a trailer. If they're a sped ed teacher, I'm all for it. We'll, we'll work them out.
Anything else? I have one question. Do we re-interview, so, like, I don't, I'm not as familiar with, if, I'm thinking, like, at the end of the year, if we're interviewing a fifth-grade teacher at some other elementary school, and, you know, we picked the best candidate, but maybe two or three were, were viable, yeah, did we go back in the pool, or how does that, or do they have to reapply for each position?
So, the, the easy answer to that is if a, if a group, a group of principals who may have five or six elementary positions, they might get together and interview five or six or seven candidates, and then they'll pick from that pool. And if they offer a job and that individual turns them down, they can go back to that group and ask them to, if they're interested in the position. Yeah, right now, it's, it's all hands on deck, and there's a, there's a great emphasis in trying to fill staff members.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm guessing if, if you were a viable candidate, at some point in any process, you probably already have a job right now, and so, well, are we good there? All right, we'll move on. Item number 18, Discussion and Possible Action to Establish a New Special Revenue Fund, 205, New Nevada Education Fund, in accordance with the requirements of Senate Bill 178, that's SB 178, and this is for possible action. We'll have Mr. Feeling presenting this.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Good evening, trustees. I could have used some help moving this weekend, if, if you were offering.
We already hired you.
So, the, our SB 178 was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor, which established the New Nevada Education Funding Plan, or some derivation thereof, which is, and we discussed to, to a great extent, this idea of trying to provide more per pupil funding for English-language learners and for free, students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. The way the final kind of math worked out on it, the way they figured out how they were going to fund students was if they, if you had students at a one- or two-star school as designated by the NSPF, and then you had, you looked at the students that qualified for EL services or were designated as free and reduced lunch, and then if, out of that group, they performed in the lowest quartile performance-wise, and, and the, the way they, they look at that is different for different grade levels. We had one school that qualified, which is Pioneer High School at this time, and there were 34 students that either were EL or FRL, or both, but even if you're both, you only count one time. So, we receive, we will be receiving $1,200 per pupil, which works out to about $48,000. Guidance from the state is requesting or mandating that we set up a special new, a special revenue fund, and they're designated that as Fund 205, which currently does not exist in our chart of accounts, and that is how they're going to track that money specifically. So, all of those funds coming in need to specifically be spent at Pioneer High School, supporting students there. So, I don't know if you have any other questions, but the, I guess the final piece to that is to establish a fund, it does take a resolution of the board. It's not something that I can do without your support with that.
So, who will decide what that $48,000 goes to? I mean, what programs or whatever? Who, who's deciding how to spend that money?
So, Mrs. Kima and Dr. Prader are working on that right now. I think Dr. Prader is ultimately responsible with that at this point.
Ms. Carini?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees establish a new special revenue fund, 205, New Nevada Education Fund, in accordance with the requirements of Senate Bill 178.
Second. A motion by Mr. Carini and a second by Mr. Cassioppo. Do we have board discussion?
Could we just clarify this, that it's Senate Bill 178, but of the 2017 legislative session, so it's not.
Yeah, no, that, that would be.
Yeah. Would you, okay.
Mr. Carini, are you accepting to the?
I'm good with that. In accordance with the requirements of Senate Bill 178 from the 2017 legislature session.
Legislature, yeah.
I was just making sure you're good with that. Do we have any other board discussion? Do we have public comment? Okay, seeing no comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody has it. Ayes win. Item number 19, Approval of the Consent Agenda. This is for possible action, and we'll take public comment prior to it. Is there any? Is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Cassioppo?
Yeah, there's an item on there that involves my firm, and so as a result, I'm going to abstain from voting due to a pecuniary interest.
Okay, anything else? Or, no, or, well, yeah, okay, make a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion by Mr. Walker, second by Mrs. Wilkie. Do we have any board discussion on the motion? Public comment? Seeing no public comment, all in favor? Aye. The ayes have it, all of them. Moving on. Item number 20, informational items. This is for discussion only, no action will be taken. Do we have any discussion on the informational items in our packet? All right, we'll move past that. Item number 21, request for future agenda topics.
Mr. President, just the one on the social workers, that we can address their status, financial status, pay going forward.
I had that added down for, I wrote it as a question, how do we keep our social workers? But, yeah, I think it's probably could stand to be, I mean, that's oversimplified almost, but I think it touches on the fact that, you know, it could be broad, I guess, with a variety of, how do we make that environment that they want to stay? And I would guess it needs to include, I don't know, can we, like with a grant, can we prop benefits up to it? You know, add something to them as employees or not? I don't, I think that, for me, that would be a question during that, so if we could be prepared for that. Any other future agenda topics?
Not that, but just maybe, does that have to be a separate agenda item, or is that something we want to talk about when we're talking about the budget?
I think we had a...
So I was, I would just say formally that what I had brought up about discipline at the elementary level and support for teachers with extreme behaviors, and then, you know, there was an issue that the teachers had brought forward last year to, in a meeting I was invited to, about how substitute situations are handled when there is no sub to fill the vacancy. And so I don't know if, maybe one of the things we should look at doing is examining what policy we have, or maybe create a policy of how schools are to deal with that if we have a vacancy in subpositions.
Yeah. Just for the teachers' sake. So, well, Mr. Stokes, I don't know if we can get into too much of this, do we have a way in the district that we do it currently?
Yes, we do. And the principals have some autonomy in dealing with that, but we typically ask for volunteers from the teachers, and then we pay them for their prep time, or for time spent that is given, if they volunteer to have more kids in their room, because we can't find a substitute teacher.
Okay, so maybe, maybe a presentation on our way, and if you see room for improvement or how the, I guess, the various varieties too, so that we can be more in tune with it then.
I may add to that just data on how many substitutes we have, have used, other than for PD days, but for normal days, if we could just have that data, if it's available.
Mr. Karini?
I think Stacy brought it up earlier. We had a lot of discussion at the NASB legislative kind of review this past Saturday, Senate Bill 287, basically requires all employees and volunteers, I think that's the change this year, for a public school or private school, regardless of whether they are licensed to report suspected abuse or neglect of a child by a person responsible for child's welfare. So there's, I guess, maybe a training component there, and then the biggie there is that all volunteers at a public school and employees and volunteers at a private school need to undergo background checks, and a background check is to be performed of each unlicensed employee and volunteer at least once every five years. I know we have a policy, do we need to review that?
We definitely have a practice. It was under review with our Safety Services Department, and we can bring back information to tell you what we're currently doing, and certainly take feedback from you and incorporate information from the law, from this new bill.
Yeah, I guess that would be my question, are we in compliance with this? And then also, I guess additionally, on the volunteers, do we need to do some training with them, or at least make some sort of statement with that, about the reporting?
And again, we do have a process where we provide a lot of information and require them to take into account certain expectations, but we can make a report to the trustees so that you know what's, what we're doing from that perspective.
Yeah, so I guess an agenda item on the, how we handle our volunteers within our schools, backgrounds and such. Okay. Do we have any other future agenda topics? All right, I think we're, I think we're doing all right. Item number 22, adjournment. Thank you.
Good job.